All right, good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to our February 8th, 2022 work session. We are having a few technical difficulties in that we are working on the visuals for the board room itself. But we, I understand, we can call ourselves to order and proceed, and the techs are working on the visual piece. So again, welcome. Present in the board room, we have members Higgins, Jacobs, Lessons, and Wilson. Online, we have member Holoman and myself, Bellamy. We also have Dr. Bishop, and we have several guests as well as staff, and we will ask them to introduce themselves as they speak. So today is our, a special work session, it's not a special work session, but a work session so that we can continue our conversation around the CWA. The chair from the governance committee requested a session so that we can dig deeper into the proposal as well as hear from the administration, and the board can have an ample opportunity to get its questions asked. This is not a business meeting, there will be no voting today. But you please ask any questions that come up for you, and we will try to get you answers. So first on our agenda, we have our request, board requests, board member requests for information, and that's just a quick order of business for us, for the board, and we should be able to do that in no time at all. All right, so for purposes of prioritizing information, the first request is from member Donley. Okay, he is not here, I'll read it anyway. Is that the one, based on the new? Yeah, let's go to the next one, give him time to be here. Okay. The second one is the COVID dashboard, and I think that was member Lessons, I think we've done that one, is that correct?
Yes, there was a long response in Board Connect.
Did you have further questions at this time?
No further questions.
Okay, thank you. So that one is completed. The third one, excuse me, is the building design committee, that came from member Jacobs. There were three questions, and I do need to explain that I kind of put them here so I wouldn't forget them, but at the same time, we expect to have a full discussion at our meeting tonight, member Jacobs, what is your pleasure?
If it'll be addressed tonight, I think that's great, as part of the motion to adopt the 65% design thinking.
All right, thank you, that's relative to memo 69, thank you. So we will deal with that one tonight during our discussion. And then the fourth item, also from member Jacobs, I'll let you speak to it. We have given you some data, but I don't know if it answered all your questions.
Yep, thank you, Madam President. So the intention of the request was to ask for data, and this was something member Higgins alluded to at a past meeting, that compared the applicants and the demographic information for who's applying for positions in the district compared to hiring data, and using that as to establish a baseline for our guardrail, which pertains to this metric. And so the intention was to get that and then have a conversation after doing a bit of analysis. The administration did provide two spreadsheets which were very helpful, it appears that they pertain primarily to current employees and not applicants, and so I think it's part of the equation, but it's not the full, full set of information, I think, which would be valuable, and so I think my request still stands to have that information.
So you want applicant data, applicant-based data?
Yes, to compare with the...
In as much as allowable under the law.
Of course.
Okay. Okay, all right, so the clarification would be for, it's ethnic, it's the data but from the debt, from the applicant database, who's applying, is that correct? We want to know, you want to know? Member Higgins?
You know, I appreciate that, because that's the clarification as opposed to current workforce, but I think ideally a presentation would include the stages that you would normally have in an affirmative action program, what is your population, how many are being qualified and screened, how many are being selected, and generally that's what the affirmative action program looks at, is those various stages, and if we could expand that a little bit for that, I think that would be beneficial for us to assess the strengths and weaknesses of achieving diversity.
Okay. I would share that we are an affirmative action employer, we are, I mean, we are an equal opportunity employer. About 25, 28 years ago, we got in deep trouble with affirmative action, but I hear what you're both saying, and there are, you're correct, the information that you're wanting is similar to that, so yeah.
Can I respond to that?
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Having been involved with affirmative action for a long time, we're not asking that we establish a program that mandates anything, and it would be inappropriate to do it anyway, even affirmative actions that give a hiring process above the best qualified gets to be an issue for EEO anyway, but the process of trying to increase your applicant supply, looking at whether your qualification screening process is a problem that's impacting, adversely impacting, and then your interviewing and selection process allows us to look for biases, not preference.
Absolutely. And I think we are saying the same thing, just different words, but I'm inclined to agree with both of you. Dr. Bishop?
Yes, I was just making that clarification as well, that we actually don't have an affirmative action policy.
Okay, so did we get the clarification on item, was it four? Okay, so that one will remain, and so we will put it, immediate, short-term, long-term.
Madam President, I will get with the team that has to do the work and see how many hours to, and adjust other work.
Okay.
Yep. The board will get a monitoring report on the work around cultural responsiveness and diversity, yeah.
Righty. Okay, so we'll leave that on the list, thank you. And our fifth one came from member Lessons, help me understand why key portions of ASD application to deed.
Yeah, essentially, I would like to have a better understanding of any differences in the amounts of federal funds that the board has allocated to certain purposes, and the amounts that have actually been utilized, if that's the correct word, you know, submitted to the state. And so I looked at two particular issues, one from, that was allocated in 2020 for elementary health teachers for about $3.2 million, and one that was allocated in 2021 for teachers to preserve the PTR for about $28.9 million this year. And both of those in the grant management system seem to be a bit close, but a bit under, and so I'm wondering how much have we actually utilized, and is there any rollover money that could be applied in the, say, upcoming FY23 budget? So I have, yeah, so it seems a pertinent question to ask as we look at that budget.
Do you think we could deal with it in finance?
We have a finance meeting before the next, do we not have a finance meeting?
Yeah, we do, we have one.
I think it's after the 22nd, so it's timely information with respect to the budget process.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think our, I think finance next meets on the 23rd.
So I recall a response, so the response that you got was not sufficient for your understanding, is that what you're saying? I recall, I think Mr. Anderson sent the response.
Dr. Bishop does say the use of the funds does fluctuate with the actual costs, and so I'm wondering what have we actually changed?
And very similar, since it is to the budget, it is just like the budget is an estimate of what we're going to use, and then as people come in, the actual cost of people, contract salary things will adjust, and so we can put some information, the board can act, and if that isn't enough, we can address it again. Will that work?
We could give a quick reply now and then a longer if you wanted, but for the health teachers, some of them ended up not being health teachers, so you couldn't apply the grant against that if they ended up being virtual or classroom teachers. So there was a plan, and then there was the reality. For the number for teachers, if you use a district average, but it ends up that there's a lot of junior teachers in it, then you actually end up applying less toward the same number of teachers, so it's, none of it is, is anything other than reality.
We can provide those numbers in the Board Connect.
I appreciate that sort of general overview, and that makes sense to me. I guess my follow-up question would be, if the totals are roughly $2.7 million, does that then, is that money, where is that money, what's available?
Remember that sometimes other things cost more, and you always use restricted money first, and sometimes that changes the actual outcomes regardless of, it wasn't a violation of the intent of what you asked for, but prices change, and that actually happens year-round in the district.
And to your question, yes, it would fall over, and so we can get you those numbers.
Right, so that one would be an immediate one, because they're going to work on it right before the 22nd. Now, member Donley's not here, I think he's on his way, I do want to look at his request, I'm sorry. His request, let's see. Okay. Based on the new adopted CAFRA, what is the average cost per student in ASD, what is the cost per non-special needs student, and what are these costs for the current school year? Is that something, I thought, I thought that was, we had something in Board Connect, that was answered in Board Connect, I think it was January Board Connect, January first week.
And we can update that in the Board Connect as well, they can run the numbers, so, all right. Is that something this week, Jim, you think, or?
We have the PPE report that has the cost per student per school, and we can modify that if you want to see, I mean, we can do whatever might help them make decisions if...
Is that difficult to do by Friday, then we just put it in the BC?
We will, we will make every effort to have it done by Friday.
All right. If not, let me know, it's good. Okay, thank you. Are there any other requests that are not on the list before we move on? Okay, not seeing any. That takes care of our requests for information. And at this point, I'm going to turn the discussion part over to the governance chair, member Jacobs, so that we can begin our discussion and deepen our understanding around the proposal.
Thank you, Madam President. So just a quick, few words of introduction before we turn to a presentation, this, to refresh everyone's memory, this is a proposed board policy amendment in addition to 3311 and 3312 from member Donley and I that was drafted this past summer involving community workforce agreements. The memo and attached revisions were deferred to governance by our president, it was passed out of governance, and then after some additional discussion, member Donley and I felt a work session would be appropriate to ensure that there is adequate time to answer questions and receive feedback, so that was put on the calendar. This past, or late last year, we also voted to waive attorney-client privilege to make public the legal guidance that we had received on the memo and revised policies, and so with, with all that said, I think the, as you stated, Madam President, the purpose of today's, this portion of the work session is informational, and that we're not looking to amend any policy or proposal right now, this is intended to be informational and then to ask questions and then get answers to those, and we can take up any additional questions or amendments once the item is calendared for our non-action and then action item at a future meeting. With that said, we have guests, as you mentioned, present, I would like to give the floor to, first Zach Fields to enter, to present the team he has, and then I understand that there's going to be a presentation as well, so I'll hand it over to him.
He's online, okay.
Thanks, member Jacob, and I think the plan is for Shane Lindsey, President of South Central Building Trades, to go through a presentation on what CWAs and SCWAs are, and we are all available to answer questions.
That'll be great, Mr. Lindsey, you're welcome to present if you'd like, thank you.
Yes, come up, please, thank you. And give us your name, and, welcome.
My name is Shane Lindsey, I'm Building Trades President for the South Central Alaska Building Trades Council here in Anchorage, greatly appreciate you guys letting us present to you today. I also have my vice president, Ryan Andrew, here as well, so we've got us two, and then I've also got Khalil Wooden on the line as well, she's, she can certainly ask, answer any legal questions. So we do have just a short presentation I'd like to run through with you, if you've got any questions at the end, we'll, we'll certainly do what we can to address those. So again, thank you for letting us present. Just to give you some background for myself, I've been serving on the council in a number of capacities for eight or nine years now. Most extensively, I've dealt with the CWA ordinance at the municipality level, worked with the administration there, worked with contractors, worked with AGC, worked with assembly members, and pretty much have been with that policy ordinance through, through this entirety. I also have negotiated, I think we've done six now, under the municipality ordinance, negotiated and executed all of those agreements as well, so fairly in-depth knowledge on the template and the municipality ordinance. So just to dive into and explain a little bit of the history behind CWAs and exactly what they are, really at the basic level, SCWA or CWA or PLA is really a collective bargaining agreement. It is no different than the agreement, collective bargaining agreement, you guys negotiate and deal and enter in with your employees, teachers, so on and so forth. That is really the crux of it. PLA is a CBA, collective bargaining agreement, but it's specific to one project, and it covers that project, that project only, and only the employees working on that project. A CWA is a PLA, same thing as a PLA, which is a collective bargaining agreement again, but it has a community workforce development aspect to it. And then you have a SCWA, which is a student community workforce agreement, again, same as a community workforce development, but now we're adding a student component to that. So that, that pretty much is the differences between those, again, keeping in mind that all of these are really just collective bargaining agreements between the employer and the employee. Current areas that use CWAs, PLAs, SCWAs, here in Alaska, you have Juneau and Anchorage that use them on a regular basis, and then really nationwide, these are found, they're fairly common, including Seattle, King County, LA, some back east, New York, such. So how would SCWAs work for ASD? Pretty basic, pretty simple, whenever a project has an estimate over a million dollars, it would go to a review team. That review team would look at that project and based on the criteria outlined in the ordinance, determine whether or not an SCWA would meet those criteria, and either approve or not approve an SCWA. If the SCWA is approved, it would then, we have, we've got a template that we have also given the board members, that template and the requirement to sign on to that template would go out with the bid documents. Everybody who bids that project would be well aware of it, and if they are a little bidder, they would be required to sign on to that, that template or a version of. Now, we do get into areas, typically the template will stay as is, but there might be some specific, project-specific issues that we might need to talk about, whether it be, you know, scopes of work, or, or certain criteria for, criteria that's specific to those projects that we might need to modify or change. Mutual agreement between us and the contractor, we have that ability to make those changes, and then once they adopt that and sign off on it, then it would be awarded. So really, what is, what is different and what is status quo, really, status quo stays the same, administration still is able to manage a project just as they ever have, the administrator works with the contractor to get the project done, the contractor works with the employees to get, to get the project built, and really, the avenue that, that changes slightly is the fact that you have, you're giving, you're giving career readiness goals through procurement. That's really kind of the crux, the added bonus to this, through apprenticeship utilization, through school-to-apprenticeship, and frankly, a career path for ASD students in the future. One of the, one of the questions that's popped up, and we've had quite discussions, lengthy discussions on with even board members, what is the appropriate threshold amount? Really, there is no standard across the nation, it varies from, from area to area. Right now, Anchorage municipality has a three and a half million, there was some discussion about even going to a 500,000 threshold. Looking at it, analyzing it, obviously, the lower, the lower the amount, more projects are included, more opportunities that are provided, however, we think a million dollars is, would be an appropriate threshold where you're capitalizing on, on most part, on a lot of the projects and getting opportunities to those students and people that we're targeting. So just to wrap it up, questions and answers, do SCWAs restrict the number or type of contractors who can bid on a project? Absolutely not. This is open to union, non-union, doesn't matter, even non-union contractors, and we've signed up several through the municipality ordinance, non-union contractors have the ability to bring on their workforce, their current workforce, if they need additional manpower needs, then they can certainly call any of our hiring halls and get additional workers out of our respective hiring halls. In fact, a lot of non-union contractors don't have apprenticeship programs, through this, they would be eligible to get apprentices through our programs and be able to, again, ultimate goal, train the next generation of workers. Will SCWAs change the cost of projects? Again, absolutely not. Right now, labor, the, the cost of labor is determined through prevailing wage laws, doesn't matter what, what government project, government-funded project, a carpenter or an electrician makes the same union or non-union through prevailing wage laws, so there is no, there's no additional expense. One could even argue that maybe there is a cost savings to a non-union contractor paying into benefit plans, there's a tax savings on the payroll taxes that they don't have to pay on those benefit plans where they would on, if they're paying too on the check. Will SCWAs create more potential jobs and career pathways for ASD students? Absolutely. That's the main primary goal. Again, we need, we need to work better at training the next generation of workforce, especially this generation, doesn't seem to be gravitating towards trades, we're having a hard time getting applicants to our programs, and we can, we all have training programs, we can train more people, but we've got two concerns, one is we got to have jobs for them, which this will help us with through apprenticeship utilization requirements in the, in the CWA, SCWA, but then also it gives us the ability to reach out to ASD students and graduates, hopefully the ultimate goal is to work better with the school district and open up some more of those opportunities. King already does a pretty good job, but we want to open up those doors to other, other high schools and get more people interested into the trades, keep them here in the community and help grow and, and grow this next generation of workforce. We've got a lot of infrastructure money coming in, a lot of projects are coming up, we're going to need workers, and this is a great way to, to help grow that. So with that being said, I will entertain any questions, or we can direct them to others that we have. So, Madam President, I have a question first, and then if you'd like to facilitate other questions from board members, that's perfectly fine by me, before we proceed, the next part of our work session is hearing from the administration, so is it, with your permission, can I ask my question?
Yes, please. And then member Higgins.
Thank you. So, Mr. Lindsey, thank you for the presentation, I appreciate it. Are you, or do you have someone present today who can speak to the municipality of Anchorage, PLA, and the, I think you said six projects were utilized, the process successfully, are, do you know those projects offhand, have any been completed, and then either yourself or is there someone here from the municipality who can speak to kind of their experience with the process? Yeah, I can, I can rattle off a few, supportive Anchorage, Phase 1 and Phase 2, Phase 1 is complete, that was done, no issues there, no concerns. Phase 2 is in year, I believe it's in first year of a two-year project, going smooth, no issues, concerns there. The solid waste transfer station was a three-phase, it's a, it's a construction management at-risk project, so there was three work packages done on that, work package 1 was not under a CWA, but work package 2 and 3 are. Work package 2 is just about complete, and they're starting work package 3 now, that's, that'd be the final wrap-up. Again, it's been very, very easy, very, very seamless, and then we've had a couple smaller, smaller projects, two road projects here in town, those were very easy, they were pretty much about 20, 30-minute conversations, just ironing some stuff out, we signed the agreement and worked, and really haven't had much discussion since, so things have gone relatively smooth, no real issues that I can think of off the top of my head.
Number Jacobs, could I add something to that?
Thank you, Mr. Fields, please.
I think one difference with where the school board is today is that we have an opportunity to build on the experience of the municipality, when the municipal assembly passed a CWA ordinance, they then went back and worked with, with industry and with labor on writing a CWA template, which took quite a bit of time, Shane was very involved with that, and I think now that that template is out there, and contractors and training organizations are familiar with it, it's easy to incorporate a template in your policy as you adopt it, you have a draft template that's been customized to address schools, and it's just going to make the transition to this policy, should you choose to adopt it, much smoother, and now the contractor's been working with this policy, they're all going to be very familiar with it. I don't know if Shane has anything else to add, but he put a lot of time into developing that template with the municipal project management and engineering office and with contractors.
Okay, thank, thank you. Zach, Mr. Field, sorry. Member Higgins, no question?
Thank you. I'm kind of curious about how effective you are at actually recruiting even trainees, I mean, you've got, you know, such a large drop in number, 27,000 is what we heard, the figures, from 10 years ago in one presentation with Neil Freed, the state economist, less people working today than, than 10 years ago, and I'd see, can't go anywhere without signs for sale, I almost see this as a plus in two ways, one is we do need to get people into the field, and two, I can picture this somehow helping to supplement the lack of workforce that we have today to even get projects done, I don't know how big a problem is that right now, and even getting trainees into programs and recruiting them, is, is that a problem you're currently experiencing too?
So speaking on behalf of operating engineers, which I, I'm a business agent for, we are holding our own, we've been fortunate last few years, and the decline of residents has also been a decline in projects that have been out there, but now we're starting to see things are going to be picking up. But now we're starting to see things are gonna be picking up. We've got several large projects right on the cusp of, of being bid. I think we're gonna do okay, probably for the next year, maybe two. But with the infrastructure package money coming in, we just met with the Department of DOT Commissioner here last week and are kind of getting a perspective on how things are gonna go. It's gonna be years three and four. So right now, we have ramped up, operating engineers again have ramped up. We've, we've got on more apprentices this year than we ever have. And we're continuing to do outreach, looking in, in areas, kind of thinking outside the box, any place we can get recruitments, people interested, we're, we're committed to doing so. So I don't know if, Ryan wants to talk on IBW's behalf.
Sure, absolutely. And I, I don't know if this microphone's on or not, but.
It is.
Okay, perfect. So Shane mentioned, I'm Ryan Andrew. I work for the IBW as the Assistant Business Manager here in Anchorage, but also the Building Trades Council Vice President. And from the IBW's perspective, it's much the same as Shane mentioned. We really have not seen much of a drop in our number of applicants. In fact, our pool of applicants has stayed relatively constant, if not grown a little bit larger. So we're not experiencing that now either, which is great. But I definitely think that there's room for improvement on who we're recruiting into these apprenticeship programs and really think that, you know, the, the opportunity should be afforded to district students who are graduating and entering the workforce.
Okay, Dr. Bishop, your question?
Yeah, thank you. That was actually gonna be my question, because my understanding is that apprenticeships, some of the qualifications you need is to be 18-years-old and have a high school diploma. And so, working with ASD students, generally our students, don't have that.
Could I address that?
When they graduate and are adults, looking so.
So, so a couple of things, yes. One is, we do have, our apprenticeship programs have what they call school to apprentice. And it does allow an exemption for the under 18 to get into the apprenticeship programs. But what, really what we're trying to dial into is get into those applicants and say, here's opportunities for you. And if you're interested, we have the ability to do a direct linkage, where typically, our programs go through a, an interview process. We put it out to the street, everybody who applies gets an interview and then comes in. With our direct indent program, we can go straight to Keen Career. If they've got X amount of, of, of students interested, we can just grab them and put them into the program.
Yeah, I've seen that happen and that you've done that. So I, I was just curious if there was a problem with that already, that this would be fixing?
Yeah, it doesn't get utilized enough, frankly.
This is, uh, this is Zach. Could I, could I add to that, please?
Go on, Zach.
Thank you for the opportunity and to Dr. Bishop for bringing that up. I understand some of this can seem kind of abstract, but to me, the opportunity here is to scale up that very successful King Tech School to Apprenticeship linkage program. Back when I worked at the Department of Labor, I had the opportunity to start going to some of those signing ceremonies and now have seen students from King Tech graduate, go into apprenticeship, finish a four-year apprenticeship and be a journey worker, supporting themselves and being successful in the community. And it's really inspiring to see that in individual people and individual ASD graduates. The problem that I saw before I ever worked for Laborers Union was just that it's not at a large enough scale. For example, typically, we have one to two King Tech students per year go into the laborers. I think there is a similar number of students going into some of the other trades. And when you have a community workforce agreement policy, that gives you the ability to plan and have greater certainty around the amount of work and the amount of training dollars going into that system, which is jointly funded by union members and contractors. And because of that, you're going to give your trustees, again, union members and contractors who are on the committee that oversees the training schools, the ability to indenture more apprentices. So I really hope that if this policy passes, we're gonna be able to scale up the number of apprentices, of apprentices in all of our trades. Obviously, the federal infrastructure bill is a huge deal and a very positive thing for the state. But I think we control these dollars as, as a local government, as local taxpayers. And with a little greater certainty in planning, we can expand the number of apprenticeship opportunities for graduating seniors through those linkage agreements.
Thank you. Other questions? I, I actually have a question. Shane, could you talk, could you just walk quickly through a project, right? And the review part of it, just quickly through what this would change for us, that, that we're missing now, that? I'm just trying to get a sense of this. I'm curious about the review part of this and, and how that might impact what we currently do? And if there's something, what is, what is the review team replacing, I guess, or, or benefiting?
So the, the review team's not really, it would be in addition to. So at the point, the procurement office is getting ready to release a project to bid. If that, if that estimate is over a million-dollar threshold, that project would go to a review team. That review team, again, within the, the, within the policy is the requirements for CWA or, or the, basically, the, they would review it with those, those policy requirements. If it meets those policy requirements, they would approve or not approve. So really, it's, you're looking at maybe a day or two addition there. And then, if it is approved, it would go to procurement. And the procurement would send out, when it bids that project to the contractors, it would send out that template and note in the bid documents that a CWA would be required to, to be fulfilled before being awarded the bid. So, once the project is bid and there's a low bidder, then the low bidder would talk to the council, sign off on the template, we're now becoming the official SCWA. And then at that point, it's awarded and the project goes to them. Really, it's no, there isn't much of a, maybe a slight, maybe day or two here or there. Most of that's pretty streamlined, pretty smooth. And again, the only thing it really affects is employer employee rules and regulations. That's, that's what that SCWA is. Does that help clarify?
That helps, it helps. Questions from staff? Other board members, questions? Okay, member.
Yep, so I, I fielded a question. And I'm hoping Mr. Lindsay maybe can speak to the benefit of the policy that's drafted regarding the review committee, including a board member. Benefit that, do you see a benefit to it? Can you outline that a little bit too?
Yeah, I, I do see a benefit of that. With the current policy or current ordinance through the municipality, it's a board of five. There's three appointed by the administration, one from the, one from the Building Trades Council, typically it's myself or one of the other officers. And then you have one from the contractors, which is typically the AGC will appoint one. So currently, you know, the way, just as any business is, when you have three people from the administration, they're gonna do what their boss says. So really, the administration gets one vote. Building Trades will get one vote and the AGC gets one vote, is really kind of how that, that boils down. So if you can have more of a fair and equitable committee, then I think you get a better opportunity to really truly vet what's, what's there rather than having a, a mix of what the current agenda is.
Chairwoman Bellamy, is, is it possible to jump in here with a question?
Just, just one second. I, I needed to ask a clarifying question. So it doesn't matter if board members have expertise in this area? Because I, I know nothing about building. I mean, I know what looks good, feels good, but I know nothing.
Sure.
So how would I add my voice to a review team?
I think it's more important that the criteria that's outlined in the ordinance is, is fulfilled. So I think what our last proposal was, is that Building Trades and, and contractors would be advisories. So we would advise what, whether or not it would meet that criteria. And you being unbiased would be able to say, yes, we agree with you, no, it does line up with that criteria or it doesn't.
Okay. Mr. Fields?
I, I apologize. Seeing it on Zoom is a little tricky for me to see.
Yeah, it's okay.
Jason Bakinstad, who was the Chief of Staff for the mayor when the municipality of Anchorage implemented this, I think is on the Zoom. And I, I just wanted to flag that if he's not on the Zoom, I'm not sure if there's a way to let him in, but I'd ask him to be here just to answer process questions in terms of what was it like to implement this project from the start? And I don't know if you wanted to address your question, Chair Bellamy, of just the process.
Okay, we don't see him online yet, but he, we'll keep an eye out. Okay, thank you. That helped. Member Jacobs, anymore? I don't see any more questions. Do you have another question for?
So yeah, no, that, that's the last of my questions. I, I did wanna give space for Member Donley, just as a chance to ask questions if he had any. And then I know that we have a presentation with the administration next to finish up the work session.
So just a minute, yes. So luck of the record show, Mr. Donley has joined us. Member Wilson?
I was hoping you could maybe share with the board a little bit about the work with King Tech and the pre-apprenticeship programs that are already in place and how that helps with the school to work.
Thank you for the question. So a little bit about, I know we've mentioned King Tech and kind of the program that happens there. I really, really can't stress enough how incredible it is of, of a program that they have going at King Tech and specifically the partnerships that some of the trades have with those programs. If you, if you've ever had a chance to attend one of their signing day ceremonies, it's, it really is incredible to see these high school students entering really good-paying careers in the construction industry. And not just construction, they've got, you know, partnerships with several of the courses that they offer there. But that's exactly the type of thing that we're wanting to expand on. And, you know, Dr. Bishop asked the question about, you know, working with high school students or waiting until they graduate. That's kind of, that happens in the spring, right when they graduate. And in theory, they would meet all those minimum qualifications to enter apprenticeship. And so, you know, what we're, what we're, what we'd like to do is expand on being able to, you know, make those classes a little bit larger maybe, or, you know, being able to bring in more of those students who would like that same opportunity. So that's what we're, we, we're committed to doing as part of this. And, and that's really, you know, one of the main goals from my perspective, so.
Go on, you had a follow-up?
Actually, it's more of a, a follow-up statement, because I'm, I'm such an advocate for our career and readiness goals. I would like to see how, if, if we have the opportunity to expand those programs to, to other schools, how we could work on partnering with the, the school district and the work that's being done to, to expand our internships for students, our OJT's for students, and the work that's already being done to expand our career and work readiness programs.
And you're speaking as IBW?
No, I'm speaking as a school board member.
Oh, how we could do it or they could do it?
No, 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 just how the school district could make that more robust and partner with the community.
Yeah. We have a plan to grow out CTE, but we do struggle with getting kids into IBW and qualifying. We do sign, really, I, I've been to a signing where there's over 60 kids who sign, but two of them were in a registered apprentice. Many are in apprentice programs, but they're not registered with the union. So I was wondering if you're proposing a quota then, if we're going to adopt this, that so many students in the school district would be approved?
Speaking personally and for our organization, I, it would be tough to put a quota on, I think, because part of the reason is that the construction industry does vary. And so from year to year, you have, you have varying demand based on the work that's out there. But I think in general, the more opportunity that we can provide for students to enter those apprenticeships when the work is busy, we really like to see that happen.
Thank you. Welcome, Member Donley. Did you have any comments or questions for this part of our information session?
I was just wondering if the secretary could make another to link up with Mr. Bakinstad? I think he's there, he can hear us and see us, but.
I, I can, I can both see and hear you.
Who is that speaking?
This is Jason Bakinstad.
Okay.
Okay, for some reason, you're, you're showing up as Zach Fields. There's two Zach Fields.
There it is, he's changed it there. All right, welcome, Jason. Member Donley, did you have a question for him?
No, but I think he had some comments about his, his experience with, working with and adopting a CWA.
Okay. Did you, Jason, would you like to make a few comments relative to your experience?
Sure, I, I'd be happy to. You know, I, I, I thought the, the, the process that, that we went through, kind of establishing this ordinance and the, the process, kind of developing the ultimate kind of community workforce agreement that is kind of the basis for any project was, was very iterative between each of the, the, the trades that are, are a member to it, as well as the, the few kind of general contracting organizations or businesses that participated as well. I think throughout that process, we, we actually came to a really strong document. And while the first couple of CWAs that we had, there were more kind of negotiated terms between the trades and the contractor that was ultimately selected for that process. At least as, as time went on, those became fewer and fewer, because as I said, we, we continued to kind of improve that document. I think we, we have it in pretty good shape now. And, and I'll just say, you know, one of the, the questions that you had President Bellamy was about you not necessarily having any experience doing any building or being an engineer. And while I think that's certainly, you know, a valid question, in, in our makeup, one of the people that we had included as a member of the review team for the municipality side was the municipal manager. And, you, you know, typically, that person also doesn't have any experience building anything or is typically not an engineer either. What I will say though, is that part of the experience that, that they bring to the table is a fuller understanding of what I would consider the governmental interest in wanting to approve a CWA for a project. And by that, I mean, you know, you as a school board member, I, I think would want to ensure that there's timely and efficient completion of any projects that the, the school district does. You wanna make sure that you minimize any costs or delays, increase workplace safety, things like that. So I, I think there would be a, a strong role for somebody that has that type of background and, and thinking about those, those types of, of issues. And I will say that from, from my perspective as, as well, you know, we've, when, when I was still with the city, again, I'm a private resident of the municipality at this point. But you, you know, when I was in my role with the city, I, I always found that the, the CWAs helped the, the, the big project or the two big projects that I would say that we entered into for a CWA were the, the large Port of Alaska Petroleum and Cement Terminal project that we did. It was a $200 million project. And there were a lot of concerns prior to us entering into this. There were going to be cost overruns for a whole number of reasons, to say nothing of the fact that, you know, we were doing this building at, at the port while the port still needed to be run and operated day in and day out. And ultimately, you know, we came in on budget and on time for this project. And, you know, I, I, I would say that, you know, having a CWA played a role in that. So happy to answer any additional questions from, from my experience, but I think we, you know, we, we liked how the, the process was working. And, and I would also just add that not every project that was brought before the review team was approved. There were a lot of times that we said for a variety of reasons, maybe it was, there was only one trade that needed to be involved in the project, or it wasn't a super difficult project. Maybe it was just, you know, a, a minor road project. And we said, no, a CWA doesn't need to be used on that. But on all the ones that we did, I think we found real value in having a CWA. But on all the ones that we did, I think we found real value in having a CWA associated with it.
And can I ask another question? What was your threshold amount with the muni?
Our threshold amount within the ordinance was any project over $3.5 million.
Okay. Thank you for that, thank you for being here. Member Lessons?
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of data diving here and monitoring as a board, and our students who come from families who are economically challenged struggle, like in a meaningful way. I'm wondering if you could reflect on how a CWA or an SCWA stands to benefit the under-18 set, right? The students whose families, household numbers might be employed under a CWA or SCWA?
Sure. Zach, do you want to talk to that?
Sure, I think when you look at folks who are employed in the trades, a lot of the times you have multiple generations, you have trades members with kids in the schools. And there's a wide body of evidence that people who have been hired through hiring halls have higher wages and greater economic stability. Their whole family benefits from that. When you get hired through a hiring hall and vest in terms of your health insurance, which happens pretty quickly, your whole family is on that health insurance plan. You know, addressing some of those socioeconomic determinants of kid's success allows the kids to focus on what they're trying to learn in school and, you know, not have to worry about what they're going to eat or, you know, God forbid, healthcare issues that aren't being addressed for them. So yes, I think it's overwhelmingly clear from the data that families' economic health allows kids to focus on school and not worry about, you know, survival on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, Member Donnelly?
Thank you, Madam President. Jason, you gave an example of a successful, large project completed the port, a project with a CWA. Could you give us a sense of what your experience was in implementing the municipal CWA as far as cost differences between projects with a CWA and projects that weren't constructed without one?
Jason, did you hear the question?
I did, I did. Member Donnelly, I would say that it's a hard question for me to answer because of the fact that when we selected the projects either for a CWA or we decided we didn't want, I think there were clear reasons as to why we didn't think that there would necessarily be cost savings for the ones that we didn't select. You know, again, for example, you know, I'm trying to remember the one off the top of my head that we said, no, it didn't need to have a CWA, but I think it was a run-of-the-mill road project where there was one trade that was necessary to do it. It was a repaving of the road, of, I think, a three-mile stretch of road in town, and we said, no, it doesn't need to because there isn't necessarily all of the necessary coordination that needs to go in to that project. But for example, like I said, for the port, there were multiple trades that were involved that needed to make sure that they were available there, and the equipment was there on the day that they needed to do the work. Because, you know, for that project in particular, we have very, very short building season, even narrower than the normal building season because of the necessity of us not to do any in-water work when belugas came within a certain period of, or a certain space of where the work was being done. So it's hard for me to put a dollar figure on that just because I think we differentiated. There was so much difference between projects that we said, yes, needed a CWA, and those that we didn't think needed one.
Thank you. All right, Member Jacobs, we ready for part two?
If you or the board doesn't object, my understanding is the administration has feedback to provide on the initial proposal sent by Member Donnelly and I. And I do want to thank Mr. Lindsey Adel for the presentation and hearing all the questions. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to turn it over to our Chief of Operations and his team.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm Tom Roth, I'm the Chief Operating Officer for the Anchorage School District.
Dave Whiting, Senior Director, Purchasing Warehouse, Anchorage School District.
So I'm going to be direct, and we've had conversations in the past. But simply put, the administration advises the board to not adopt a community workforce agreement board policy. That the administration supports that a community workforce agreement can be an effective alternative construction delivery method, that this would be through an administrative regulation to existing policy that requires the administration to obtain board approval to negotiate a community workforce agreement when, as we've discussed, uncertainties exist in the construction labor market, or that the project is so complex that it would inform that a CWA would be the preferred project delivery method. Again, we have communicated this. That said, with respect to this body, that, speaking for members of the administration that are involved in this business, that I am not naive to or ignorant to sentiments. If the board decides to adopt a community workforce agreement board policy, which is certainly within the purview of the board to do so, the administration strongly advises that the adopted policy meet legal considerations as addressed and informed legal opinions provided to the board. Also that the administration as the responsible agency, which is directly accountable to the public for construction project delivery, retains control of the district's construction, procurement, and management programs. To that end, the administration presented an alternative community workforce agreement policy to the board. This proposed alternative is broadly modeled on the Municipality of Anchorage policy, which did receive extensive review, legal review, as Mr. Bakkensted addressed. That this review occurred before the policy was implemented. In a moment, I'm going to ask Mr. Whiting to talk to the administration's proposed alternative policy with considerations to the aforementioned matters. That all leaders and staff involved in the procurement and construction business, you know, offer this advisement, that we offer this advisement to the board is by itself a significant action. I respectfully ask that the board give it due and primary consideration to other interests. The administration is not, we're not politically motivated or biased for or against organized labor, to be sure. Majority of our employees are members of organized labor. That's not what this is about. I will further state that the administration is committed to its fiduciary responsibilities and to providing the best possible value to the public on every construction project. That we achieve this through rigorous and deliberate application of a fair and open competition and a collaborative design and construction process. All participants in any given construction projects have a voice. History demonstrates that the district's projects are successfully and consistently delivered on time and within budget. In my time, in my six and a half years in the Anchorage School District, I have not once experienced any work disruptions or workforce disputes that have in any way affected the quality, the timeliness of completion of construction projects. Likewise, the administration demands that our contractors working for the district comply with all local, state, and federal labor laws. Also that contractors treat well and ensure the safety and well-being of their employees. And if I might just very briefly shift off of this specific topic, I do want to inform the board that we are seeing indicators that point to what is a highly volatile and inflationary construction market. It's in Anchorage and across the state. It's in the lower 48. We're going to talk about this tonight on one specific project. This matters. So at this time, I'm going to hand off to Mr. Whiting to address specific details of the proposed alternative policy, and then we are happy to engage in questions.
Thank you, Mr. Roth, through the Board President. We have received an original version from board members of a CWA, of a board policy regarding CWA. And then recently today, we received a second version of that. So I will address the recommendations we have regarding the second version, the policy we received today, the proposal. Regarding the first section that I'll address would be the qualifying project threshold. And I think Jason, with the municipality, made a salient point here that we're in agreement with at the district administration, is that if a CWA is adopted, we would recommend the thresholds at the muni for the same reasons, thresholds likened to that of the muni or the City Borough of Juneau. The muni is $3.5 million threshold, City Borough of Juneau is $4 million. And it's kind of for the reasons that Jason, the former member of the muni's administration, pointed out, that the project complexity is really the issue. If there's an advocacy for the CWA, it is because of the complexity, the high number of multidiscipline trades within the project, that there may be benefits. When you reduce that down to a million-dollar project, those projects are typically very straightforward and do not have the same number of disciplines. So we, the district administration would recommend, that's why we're recommending the $5 million threshold. So I'll pause for any questions before I go on to the next recommendation.
Sure. Member Lessons?
Yeah, thank you for talking about that threshold. Roughly how many projects, or maybe specifically how many projects, has ASD encountered in recent years? You know, over the last five years, maybe that hit that $3.5 million municipal target?
The $3.5 million would be, I did not, this will be an anecdotal response because I've not reviewed their spreadsheet. I did, I have looked at the data on that recently, but it would be probably two to three projects in that range per year for ASD of a $3.5 million.
Other questions? Okay. Yes, Member Jacob?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Whiting, could you speak to the recommendation of $5 million versus the municipality's 3.5?
Yeah, I think that, you know, really, I sort of addressed it a minute ago, is that we feel that if there is a, you know, when you look at CWAs, the idea is that there are competing projects that, if you look at the example of the CWA that the North Star Borough did that was, you know, the Lampkin issue there, they felt that there was, there were projects competing with their labor, so they implemented that CWA to try to deal with this perceived risk. When you, if you believe that there's such a risk, that risk is not present at $1 million. That risk, if you believe that, would be more suited toward highly complex projects with multidisciplines, where you feel that you need to compete against other projects to secure that labor force. So that is why we would recommend the $5 million.
Okay. Let's continue.
Thank you. Through the Board President, the second area that we would look at here is the review team. And again, we've had conversations with the municipality, we've heard testimony here today that the municipality, the composition of their review team, where they have an engineer, the city engineer on their review team, they have the city manager. So in short, they have three members of the administration on their review team. And we believe, when we reviewed this issue of having minority vote, having, in the proposed policies we've seen from the board members, it would not have a majority of administration. And per our discussion with our legal counsel, we found that it gives, they believe there's a problem with an improper delegation of ASD's authority to outside parties, where outside parties to be appointed to make this decision. So we recommend modeling, if such a policy is adopted, we recommend modeling after the Municipality of Anchorage, which has three members of the administration as voting on the five-member committee to remove that, the improper delegation of authority.
Okay. Questions? Member Lessons?
Yeah, this is maybe asking you to speak to a document you just received. There was a stapled document that came out today, and it does note that in Section 2 Paragraph C, in a new SCWA, the review team would consist of one individual appointed by the superintendent, two individuals representing the school board, and then two others. Would that three to two ratio, I mean, that's different than...
The most recent policy that was emailed today, from my understanding, had one member, it was a five, there were five members, two members were non-voting members. So the Trades Council and the Industry Member would be non-voting. The voting member would be one from, appointed by superintendent, two appointed by school board. So again, reading this, I saw it referred to in multiple sections, but it appeared that those members could be appointed by the school board and would not potentially be ASD employees, or could be completely outside parties, third parties outside the district. So that would again, not give the same configuration that the municipality has. It would be with ASD having one vote out of three. And depending on who the other parties were, they may be non, whoever the board appointed to represent them.
See no other questions? Oh, Member Higgins, sorry.
I guess I just want to comment and ask a question in regards to the issue that somehow the board might not be meeting its fiduciary responsibility by adopting this. And we have a best value bid contract approach, is that correct, that we use? And we look at things other than just bottom line cost. Is that accurate way of describing it? There are other factors we weigh in when we make a selection on, when we use best value for contract?
So you're referring to a best value RFP that the district provides?
Yes, correct.
There is a combination of, in best value, there would be a combination of review, evaluation criteria, technical evaluation criteria, and then there can be a cost component as well. So there are multiple, you know, a combination of evaluation factors, yes, that is a procurement method.
It's not strictly... It's not strictly cost is the only point I was trying to make. We looked at best value. This is public funds being used, and there is a public interest or value in the CWA, and that's the issue that somehow or another will not be responsive with public funds. And that's, that's the part that I have concerns with, addressing that, because I don't think we are doing, we are addressing an issue, which is a big issue in the community, and that is the workforce, and that is the CWA approach. And so I just wanted to make that point, that somehow we're not being fiduciary, you know, responsible with public funds. I'm just going to take objection with that type of concern being raised, that I'm not living up to some type of responsibilities here, because that's what I'm gathering and that's what I take objection to.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Bishop?
Thank you, Madam President. And this was actually my particular concern, because statutory requirements require me as the district's basically CEO, is essentially acting that way, to be responsible for funds. And if there's a five-member board, two can't vote, three are on it for any disputes, and I only have one vote, but I hold all the cards at the end of the day? Yes, I do see a problem with that, in that an outcome could occur with a vote of outside members that are non-employees and not held to the statute. So for me, and any superintendent that comes, your legal responsibility that's outlined in the statutes of our state in regard to school district and deed funding utilized through bonds of public money, that is the concern. Not that we don't believe the public has an interest. What I'm saying is when there's a dispute and the bottom line is addressed, and the district isn't represented, but yet the district, you and I both, me being your representative, then we're held accountable. And therein lies the issue with the number, I believe. And I'll let Tom Roth continue.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop, and to Member Higgins' question, and it's valid. I think that, you know, to kind of come back to a procedural piece, which, which I believe addresses your point. So when it actually comes down to the community workforce agreement, as, as the language is presented in the proposal, and frankly, this, this week got it after 2:00 PM this afternoon. So this was a bit of a surprise. But the district is not involved in the negotiations of the CWA that is strictly performed by the trade union with the contractor. So the administration in this example would have no input to that process. Whatever language comes out of the workforce agreement, it would have a financial aspect to it that the administration, as this is written, has no input into. And then the questions about what prevails? Is it the contract language between the district and the contractor? Or is it the language within the CWA if there is a dispute? So that, that sort of kind of gets back to, you know, why, you know, it is a fiduciary matter that as the administration, you know, we feel we have that responsibility, but in this, in this process, don't have a role in.
Okay. Member Lesens, she got to mic on. You good? Okay. Let's continue, please.
Okay, thank you, Board President. So again, touching on what Mr. Roth just stated, the next area of concern we have regarding the, the most recent iteration of the policy proposed by board members would be the, the lack of the ability of ASD's administration to negotiate with the Trades Council the terms and conditions of the CWA. We heard testimony here earlier today where the Trades Council themselves talked about how advantageous it was to sit down and negotiate with the municipality to develop a CWA. And in this proposed policy, it does not afford us the same right to negotiate a CWA. Just to be, to kind of give a little background, the, you know, ASD's purchasing department, under direction of the CFO and COO, and of course superintendent, we negotiate all agreements, no matter how large or how small, to meet all applicable procurement requirements in board policy under procurement, and also all applicable laws, state, federal, and local. So for us not to have that ability, it could create, as Mr. Roth pointed out, a, either an unintended conflict between the agreements, between ASD's construction contracts and the CWA. Had that, if that occurs, unless we have, you know, terms and conditions within this policy that describe which supersede, we would then have a dispute and an issue that could have a material problem, create an issue for our construction contracts moving forward appropriately. Currently, our, our contract documents describe the processes and the remedies for any of these disputes or problems within those contracts. So this would, this would muddy the waters if we are unable to have that transparency to be able to negotiate that CWA.
Thank you. Member Holloman has a question.
I was just wondering if the same dynamic has happened with the municipality and how they dealt with it. I can understand what you're saying, but I'm thinking this, this must have come up before and either been an issue or not been an issue.
Go ahead, Dave. Oh, sorry, sir. Yes, so our discussions with the municipality on this matter is they were given a draft CWA boilerplate, and then they were able to negotiate it, to get to remove any of those conflicts. And that was further supported by the Trades Council representative today, as he spoke about the process where they negotiated that with the municipality of Anchorage. And so because the ASD, our procurement policy is not identical to Title VII of the municipality, we have our own procurement policy. So to assume that because it met and did not conflict with municipality and Title VII and other, you know, administrative requirements, policies and procedures, that is not a safe assumption. We would need to, like any other agreement, we would need to negotiate and vet the terms and conditions of any agreement before we attach it to an ASD contract to, to bind that contract.
Okay. Seeing no questions? Continue.
Thank you, Board President. Another issue that the administration makes a recommendation on is the section regarding the review criteria, in talking about the CWA considering, the review team considering review criteria. Again, we would look at the municipality of Anchorage areas that they focused on, and we would look at making this appropriate to ASD, looking at the impact on bidding contractors, and also the impact on funding source, because ASD deals with multiple funding sources that all carry different potential grant conditions and requirements, which often involve different terms and conditions. So we believe that that is a, an important factor in the review criteria.
Okay. I'm not seeing any questions.
So getting back to, again, same issue, when we look at the latter part of the proposal, we would again just emphasize that, you know, if, you know, the district would recommend the opportunity to be able to negotiate a CWA that, that did not conflict with ASD's construction contracts, and that if there was an unintended conflict that neither party was aware of, that the district's construction contract would prevail and supersede the CWA in order to ensure that the projects were delivered correctly and there was no major problem to the, to the, a barrier to completing the projects.
Okay. Did you have any, any other recommendations?
Yes, in the, the latter part of the proposal, it talks about encouraging employment from individuals struggling with reentry from the community after leaving state correctional facility, et cetera. District would just recommend that if, in that language, we would, we would insert language for compliance with board policy 3515.5, restriction of sex offenders on campus regarding the prohibition of contractors employing convicted sex offender child kidnappers to work on ASD property. And this is again consistent with all contracts that we do for the district construction or otherwise contracted services under board policy. And that's, and from my understanding, the most recent iteration...
It's represented in the recent document.
Oh, is it? Okay. And then the last, this, I understand, is not?
Right. So there was, there, again, we're, we're not clear what the board's priority or primary policy is, again, this, this document being received just this afternoon. But in the initial policy, the board draft policy had in it an oversight committee, which we, we see in this second document that that committee does not exist. So if it is the intent of the board through this second document to not include that oversight committee, which the administration supports with, with the labor unions to resolve any matters, that, that in our estimation, that oversight committee, one, the language was extreme in terms of the permissions or the authorizations given to it without any administrative representative on it. Again, our current system is to have the project manager, but again, if that is removed, then we see no reason to discuss it.
Madam President?
Yes, sure.
So another question, I just want to make a comment, because the revision to the draft that originally was submitted by Member Donley and I has been submitted for reference, but the document is, is still being modified based on feedback we're getting. And so I think there's every effort to incorporate suggestions and recommendations as is feasible. And so that's kind of what that speaks to. It wasn't intended to be submitted, I think, in advance of the work session, which probably speaks to the timing. I think ultimately, we were hopeful to get feedback today and then have a revised version to request that you, Madam President, incorporate as a substitute at a future meeting, as you said.
Because I was not aware of this until my way here.
Right.
So...
So that was, it was intentional, that it's not a final draft at all, just a current working draft.
Okay. So I apologize for the lateness of it, but the intent was to, I appreciate your explaining that. All right, let's go for questions, comments, and we can open the floor. Let's see about board members first. Any questions, comments right now, and then I'll ask our guests and staff. Anyone online has questions or comments for the ASD team? Yes, Member Lesens?
I'm having trouble with that today. Thank you for your thoughtful reflections and insights. I appreciate that. I'm going to go back to that five-person review team. The idea of two individuals representing the school board, maybe this speaks to your question, you know, if you as a school board member were a member of that, what, what, what would be your response to two school board members being on the review committee?
Through the President, I think the first, the first thing, and I'm reluctant to offer an opinion, but, but I would, I would say first that your code of conduct does preclude direct involvement in contracting by school members. So that would be the first thing. But, but I would, I would offer, and again, I'm, you know, smart, smart people serve on school boards, I get that. But I think there is value, when you talk about this review team, there is value to involving people who are, as a matter of practice, in their daily routine, involved in these matters. I've said before, I mean, it's incumbent on the administration to, to understand and represent the intent of the board. And if it is the board's communicated intent that, that CWAs would be implemented as, as a priority, then that's significant. Again, we've talked about, I mean, there is, there are always going to be competing economic considerations on, on when and why would you do a community workforce agreement? We've talked about the, you know, the workplace environment and the construction environment that would drive a consideration. But again, if it's a priority of the board to increase involvement of, of youth within the municipality, then again, that's an important consideration. But I would always come back to, you know, what are the fiduciary responsibilities to deliver the best value back to the community, but also having that intimate knowledge, understanding of working in the procurement and management of construction? And if you look at the composition of the municipality's review team, it was the municipal manager, it was their, their project, what's the title, their lead engineer?
Yeah, the chief of engineering, designing engineer.
Their chief of design and engineering, and then the, the department that was receiving the project. Again, they operate a bit differently, but in the, you know, I guess the district comparative, that third member would be the project manager for the project. So it'd be the chief, the, the senior director for capital planning and construction, and then the project manager would, would be the composition of that review team.
Other questions? Dr. Bishop, you good? Anyone online have a question? I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you very much for your time. I'm going to go back to Member Jacobs, and then I'll go to Member Lesens.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to kind of wrap up our portion of the work session regarding the CWA by thanking both staff as well as our guests. And I appreciate having lived this for this past few months, while we've been working on this heavily, of having the full board given the opportunity to ask questions and kind of dig into the meat of this topic. And so I'm looking forward to going back and submitting a copy to the President, Vice President for consideration and placement on our agenda. So thank you.
Right. Member Lesens?
Yeah, I just wanted to maybe invite the administration to fully respond to the materials that were presented today.
Now, these came from Member Donley, okay, as he's, he's on the committee. And I guess if you could speak to these a little bit, Member Donley, that would be great.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I guess I didn't know how far we were going to be going in this work session, and I wanted to, we were trying to move towards accommodating some of the comments that the administration had provided. As you noticed, some of the things were adjusted based on their comments. So it was just another draft step towards doing that.
Okay. So the original draft is the July 21st, '21 draft, and that's what I think, that's what I remember. All right, okay, so this is the committee's ongoing work, is what I hear. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
I'll just thank the members of the administration for thoughtful comments.
Absolutely. Thank you. And I thank our guests, that everyone that showed up, either online or in the room. Thank you. We appreciate your support and interest in making, helping our kids be the best that they can be. And with that, not seeing any other questions, I think we are, we have done our, oh, wait, no, we have one more. Okay, yes, I just need to do a piece of business that's the, everybody else can leave, the board has to do just a few, or stay, it's up to you. The board has to do... The board has to do, I just need to get a clarification for the board on the superintendent search. Okay. So, we did the adjustments to our calendar, the timeline, actually. And we tried to accommodate a couple of things, including, oh, the superintendent conference, the FER Rendez, so, all of that stuff. Anyway, so, we have a few scheduling hurdles on the 12th, so, that would have put our, so, anyway, bottom line is, we would, we need to decide if we can meet, and I, is that a Sunday? Is that an afternoon on Sunday?
Yes, the long meeting that Molly had proposed.
We need a six-hour meeting. And I'm wondering, we're trying to wonder if we can do it on the 13th of March? It's a Sunday morning.
Madam President, SD likes savings time. We spring forward an hour. But yeah, we can do it.
Any, please say yes, please. Okay. Any objections? We just need that longer, we need that big, that five to six-hour block of time.
So, that would really be the initial opportunity for the board to engage with applicants?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Wait, let's see.
Not the seventh-ish?
This would be-
So, this is a weekday, which is why we tried for the Saturday.
This would be, this would be our time, you won't be engaging with the candidate. I mean, we would be finalizing the interview questions and procedures with the board. They would be meeting, that would be the 3:10. Do they have a copy of this?
May I, Madam President?
Please.
So, that was, this is the change that Molly proposed to accommodate the FER Rendez Day and trying to not hit those things. She initially had it scheduled for March 10th, which is a weekday. And President Bellamy, I thought that that would be pretty tough for those of you that worked during the day. So, we proposed the Saturday. They have conflicts with the Saturday, so the compromise is then to move it to Sunday, which is the 13th.
We'll give you brunch, your breakfast. A bribe, bribery. All right. So, I'm thinking Sunday to 13th. Flying back from where? Where are you gonna be gone? You're going somewhere, are you going? You won't be here on the 13th? Okay.
Was it, with the-
And they have a conflict on that. Well, could you guys accommodate a weekday? This is in March, it's gonna be- Okay, so, the 13th won't work, Sunday won't work. Saturday, the 12th won't work. Where's my calendar? So, the next weekend? The next Saturday would be, is the 19th? Let me get my calendar.
If I'm the only one with a March 5th objection, I would withdraw that.
We would have to push everything down if we did, if we were able to do that. All right. We got time to figure it out, guys.
Does-
But we were trying to not do a workday because of people who work, so that we didn't have to interfere with your workday. So, that leaves us two weekends.
Does the March 5th date still work for Ray and Associates?
No.
No, that doesn't work at all.
No. We gave it up. I'm sorry. They're four hours ahead of us.
Yep. I can't promise anything right now, but I can try to see if I can rearrange that to Saturday. And I will try to do that, but I can't promise anything yet. I have to check it out.
So, let's hold and let pet work is magic, and then, because we may have the 13th.
And, Madam President, I appreciate being cognizant of the fact that, you know, I have a, I know I and others have a nine-to-five that we have to be present for as much as we can as well. But if we need to get this done, I mean, this is an important process, I'll take a day during the week if it's required, so.
Okay.
Just want to put that out there.
Right. Okay, I'll get with you, Pat. All right, so, I'm not gonna hand these out, because they're not right. But I appreciate the input. All right, so, with that, that is, that's our last business item. And as you guys, you have received, we did send them the input. Did we forward the input to them yet from our, from the survey? Not yet. We're gonna do it on the 22nd. Okay. But we got a pair, over 2,500 surveys. Yeah, over 2,500 surveys, and I don't have the breakdown in my head right now. They were in all languages. Yeah, I'll ask Katie to forward that to you. It's just interesting to see the, yeah, we, yeah, we have, there were Spanish, Samoan, Russian, Tagalog, Korean, and I think all board members did fill out their board member-only survey, so thank you for that. Okay.
Madam President-
That concludes our business.
One more question, if I could. Do we know how many folks have applied thus far? And was the-
I don't have an update yet. The last update I had, and I can look that up for you, I think we had, we had, there were 15, I can't remember if it's 13 or 15 completed, and 24 in process. And they were from every state.
Thank you.
Yes. All right.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn to the executive session for the purpose of negotiations.
Second.
All right, moved in second that we adjourn into executive session for the purpose of negotiations.